We're going to call the regular council meeting to order. Shannon, please do the roll call.
Mr. Roden?
Here.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Here.
Mr. Yates?
Here.
Mr. Sorese?
Here.
Mr. Fury?
Mr. Scafidi?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here. May I please join Mr. Sorese in rise for the pledge allegiance and invocation?
Father, we seek your guidance for the business that is before us. In planning for the future of the city of Twinsburg, give us vision. Guide us to make decisions that are not self-serving but for the betterment of our community so we can continue to move in a positive direction. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next is the approval of minutes from April 23rd. Anything about those? All right, those stand as written. Any words and presentations?
There's none this evening.
Okay, any audience participation?
Yes. Lauren Senstruck?
Thank you. Council folks, I'm here this evening to seek city council's consideration in requesting that the mayor and city administrators place more timely and current information on the city's website. With those timely updates, it would be helpful and more intuitive as to what's going on in the city. Some examples I noticed, now I'm retired, I noticed on the mayor's webpage that the latest state of the city address was 2009. I don't know what happened to 2010, 11, and 12. I know there was some bad economic times, but you might want to include also like mayor's reports to city council if those are available. Public meetings and agendas sections on the website, I noticed that the minutes from the council meetings are like three to four months behind. No reflection on the clerk, I know everybody's busy, but you know, once minutes get approved, it'd be nice to see them out there. That way, I wouldn't necessarily have to come up here all the time, not that I don't mind like seeing council people and stuff, but know what's going on in the city. It's, you know, we get the Twinsburg bulletin and things like that, but it'd be nice to see them at the website. And Karen, I noticed in the finance department that it would be kind of nice to see like the monthly reports that council receives so we can kind of see what's going on with the finances of the city, things like the budget, any departmental costs, like personal services, things like that. I know everybody may not be interested in it. I'm a former finance director, so I find those things interesting. Since I live in town, it would be nice to see them. I'd like to commend though, the police, fire, and service departments, not all kind of bad news for you guys, but you know, their websites seem to be more current and up to date, so I kind of give them kudos on that. Obvious, I'm a person with disabilities, and I rely on finding a lot about what goes on in my city government by looking at the website. I would therefore like to request that council consider, and I do see that you videotape the council meetings, and I know a lot of communities are moving forward with the modern electronic age of putting things streaming out there on the website so we can visualize them. That would be very helpful. I don't think these requests are unduly demanding on time or aren't available. It'd really be appreciated to see them at the city's website. I also would like to take this time to thank council and all the administrators of the city for serving us. I know it's very demanding, takes a lot of time, and we do appreciate it, and I'd just like to see that available on the city's website. And I'll look for that, and hopefully we can get some more information on there timely, and then I won't have to come back here all the time. I can just maybe send you an email, okay? Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else, Shannon?
There is none.
Okay. Next we'll move to council communication and committee reports. We'll start with Mr. Yates.
Yes, the Planning Commission met on May 6th. Pretty busy agenda. There was a number of items that was discussed. One is the Wilcox, developing a new security entrance. I guess they're doing it throughout all the school buildings, but that particular project needs some additional work that had to go through Planning Commission, and that passed. There's going to be a, they passed the preliminary site plan for Corbus Farm, so I know a lot of residents have been asking questions about Corbus Farm, but we do have a site plan that meets code now, so we anticipate that moving forward. Let's see, there was a lot consolidation for the Cleveland Clinic, that's been in front of Planning Commission for several weeks now that passed. Some of the rezoning that'll be on our legislation for West Side Falls also passed. There's a new yoga studio that's going into the downtown area near Scorchers, and there was a determination that in that district that the yoga studios are a similar use, and so there'll be basically a permitted use in that district if legislation passes tonight. There's an update to Section 1148-10 that's going to be on our agenda tonight that we'll be discussing, and that's regarding our C5 district in terms of adding a couple more permitted uses in that area. Panera Bread, there will be a public hearing at the next Planning Commission meeting, which is on May 20th, and that is in regards to their seeking approval for their outdoor patio, which I know looks like they've already got approval at this point right now, but they've, there's going to be a public hearing on that the next meeting. And then also in addition, the next meeting, they're going to be discussing, Cleveland Gymnastic Training Center is looking for a conditional use permit to operate a training facility in the business district. And then the only thing, other thing I have to mention is, I attended a workshop regarding, I guess, urban walkability. It was a workshop put on at Kent State that myself and several people from the city attended, and it was, it brought a lot of people from surrounding areas that, I know Daisy was there, we were part of a team together. It was really an informative meeting, and it's basically, we took a look at our downtown area on how we can make it more walkable, friendly, how we can kind of create more pedestrian traffic, how we can kind of connect businesses, how, you know, just a lot of different things, which, you know, it kind of forces you to sit back and look that, you know, we always constantly look at traffic signals and streets as a way of moving traffic as quickly as possible, whereas this was kind of a mindset of let's slow things down and make a safer area that people want to stop and shop and visit. It's kind of an approach where I think Hudson basically has done it saying, we don't really care about the traffic, that just helps our businesses. Slower people drive by business, the more likely they are to pull over and go in it. And it keeps things safer for people walking around there. So it was a really interesting day, it was a full day. I learned a lot, and hopefully as we move forward in our comprehensive review committee, we can take some of the tools we learned there and maybe have a long-term vision for our downtown area. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Scafidi?
Thank you, good evening. My committees have not met within the last few weeks, however, in the name of Public Works, I do want to make one quick announcement, and I'm not going to steal the Public Works Director's report tonight, with regards to the trash carts that have been delivered throughout the city from Waste Management. As you may or may not know, Ward 1, there were 600 homes that were involved in a pilot program for the past year with those containers, so those residents there in Ward 1 have been using the trash carts for a year now, or over a year now. And the pilot program included weekly rubbish collection each and every week, however, the recyclables were only collected every other week. Well, now that this program has gone citywide, and we are in the process of our new contract, it was negotiated that recyclables will be collected every week along with the trash. So for all those residents in Ward 1, again, in the pilot program area, the 600 residents, you can now put your recycle container out every week. You don't have to look at the calendar, you don't have to call City Hall. There's several times, I was looking at my neighbor's house to see if they had theirs out, so I knew to put mine out, because I even lost track of it. So we don't have to do that anymore. Every week recyclables will be collected, so you could put that container out with your trash container at the same time. And one other thing, because I've been getting some inquiries since they went out, and again, I'm not going to say too much more, I'll let Chris give his report, but there is a smaller trash container available to those residents that feel that the one that they received or the standard one was too large, so you can get a smaller one, and I'm sure Chris will go into detail about that. So that's all I'm going to mention about that. I will say one other thing though, in the year that the 600 residents in Ward 1 have used it, it was, it took a little getting used to, some people didn't like it in the beginning, and once they saw how well it was working and how good it looked, they then demanded that they got a container as well. So all I could say is give it a try. I know there's some people out there that are just questioning the whole program itself, but you know, eventually it works, it's a good program, and I think you'll like it. So the rest I'll leave to Chris. The other thing I want to mention, I talked about this a couple meetings ago, the Tinkers Creek Cleanup Day, it's coming up fast, it's going to be this Saturday, the 18th, from 10 o'clock till noon, and they're going to be meeting at Glen Meadow Park from 9:30 to 9:45. There'll be refreshments there, and shirts will be handed out to all the participants that are there to help clean up Tinkers Creek. The shirts were donated by RDP Sports here in Twinsburg. There's going to be various people there, we've got Starbucks employees going to join, the Sprouting Gardeners folks are going to join, the Environmental Commission people are going to be there, some people from the building department, we've got Twinsburg residents coming out, so it's a nice couple hours to pitch in and do some good work at the, in the Tinkers Creek. And again, there will be refreshments served, and we'll be, they'll be leaving from Glen Meadow Park right to Tinkers Creek to do that cleanup till noon. So it should be a good day, hopefully the weather will be good, and it'll be successful. I know Daisy Walker, who's the chairman of our Environmental Commission, has worked tirelessly on this along with the rest of the commission, and so I expect that it's going to be, it's going to go very well and be very well attended. There were a lot of volunteers, I'm going to mention this one more time, Home Depot over Aurora and Macedonia have donated quite a few supplies and things for this collection and to the Sprouting Gardeners as well, so we want to thank them and Starbucks and RDP and everybody else that's donated to the effort. We appreciate that. I do want to make one mention to the resident that came up and spoke about information on the website. You know, it might just be a good idea, and I got to tell you, I probably haven't looked at it in a little while, but I, you know that when I get it home, I'm going to look at it tonight to see what's on there, but you know, I think that was a great idea, and thank you for bringing that to the attention. I know, Shannon, I might ask that, you might mention to the mayor that maybe have all the department heads look at their page or their information just to see if it's up to date and get it over to whoever, you know, does, puts that out there.
Okay.
That might be helpful. I know in my experience that we've done that in the past, we had, us department, the department had to go through their webpages just to make sure all the information was current, that was out there, and so I think that's helpful, and I am sure that'll help you. One other thing, as far as our council meetings, I'm sure you know, maybe you don't know, but they are televised. They were, it was Cable 9, I'm not sure what, they moved the channels around, so I'm not sure what channel they're on now, but those, our council meetings are televised every week. They start, I believe they start on Wednesdays, so they'll be, tonight's meeting will start tomorrow, so that might be another way that you can watch it too. But thank you for bringing that up, I think it was a great suggestion. Other than that, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the mayor is actually in Washington DC, she's attending the Congressman Joyce's District 14 Mayor's Conference. With that, I just have a few announcements from her that she'd like me to talk about. One is the Metro, RTA is planning a new demonstration service in Twinsburg, Twinsburg Township, Macedonia, Reminderville, Sagamore Hills, and the Village of Northfield. Their proposed service will start in the fall of 2013 as a weekday dial, excuse me, dial-a-ride service within these communities, and on this Thursday, May 16th, at 6:00 PM here at City Hall, there will be a informational meeting to learn more information and to give input about the service that they're going to be providing. Also, on May 27th, 2013, the city of Twinsburg will celebrate Memorial Day with a parade and service honoring our fallen servicemen and women, so please come out and join us for the parade. Also, there is a Twinsburg night at the University Hospital's Ahuja Medical Center. It's Wednesday, May 29th, at 6:00 PM. The event will introduce you to the leading-edge technology being used to treat patients as well as UH sustainability initiatives, and this is actually just for the city of Twinsburg to learn about that with the University Hospital, so it's going to be a nice event there. And then the Metro Parks are having, Living on the Ledge, an exhibit of Liberty Park photos from Metro Park volunteer Jerry Cannon, that is Saturday, June 1st, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, and that's at the FA Siberling Nature Realm Visitor Center, and that's in Akron. For more information, you can call 330-865-8065. And then for my report, the Environmental Commission met last week, and they actually have been able to secure 60 rain barrels from Coca-Cola Company in Twinsburg Township. The rain barrels are currently stored in the Public Works area and will be distributed to the Twinsburg residents on a first-come, first-served basis. There'll be a display of three to four of the rain barrels, complete with diverter kit, spigot, overflow pipe, and wooden platform at City Hall, at Public Works, the Fitness Center, and the Twinsburg Library. Coca-Cola will furnish a display board made specifically from Coke packaging that have been recycled to hold the rain barrel information. And then there are rain barrel applications to fill out, and just to let you know, the Get Cock Green Handed program is over, and approximately 100 $10 gift cards were distributed to Twinsburg residents, was a one-month program.
I didn't win?
Neither did I. And at the last council meeting, we did thank the companies that were part of this, so it was a great program. Again, I know Sam just said it, but kudos to Daisy and the Environmental Commission, they've done a great job in really getting that started, and it was a great program. And then the next meeting will, Environmental Commission will meet on September 12th. So with that, that's all I have. Ms. Stauffer?
The Board of Building and Zoning Appeals met on May 8th, and there was only one appeal on the agenda. At this time, I would like to make a motion to waive, and they actually approved the, approved this appeal, so I'd like to make a motion to waive the 30-day waiting period on appeal number 01, 2013. And it's basically just a fence that they wanted to rebuild, the same, it was the one they had, it was just they wanted to fix the fence, and that's all.
I'll second it.
Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
And that's it. I just, I'd like to thank the residents for going through the proper channels and going to the building department to get this approved. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Sorese?
Thank you. The Twins Day Committee met May 1st, and as I had previously announced, their theme for 2013 is fables and fairy tales, and their slogan is going to be Twice Upon a Time. As of that date, we had 410, 412 sets of registered twins, which is more than a year ago, and they've started a Facebook page, and they have over 6,000 people who like them on Facebook. Also, I wanted to announce again that there are several rezoning ordinances on the agenda, and there will be a public hearing on May 28th at 6:30 PM here at City Hall for these zoning ordinances, which is part of the procedure to get them approved and/or on the ballot. So that'll be May 28th, 6:30 PM. To add on to what Mr. Roden had said regarding the Memorial Day Parade, the staging will begin at 9:30 AM at Twinsburg High School, and the parade will start at 10:30 and travel south from the high school to the square, and the program is expected to start at 11:00 AM in front of the Veterans Monument on the square. And I had one other comment, I've received several emails this week regarding a proposed water park in the city of Macedonia, and as the residents who contacted me understood, there's very little that we could do about what happens in Macedonia, even though it's close to our residents and close to our properties on the border there. But the mayor has assured me that she will meet with the mayor from Macedonia and see if there is any kind of things that can be worked out regarding the proximity of that project to our residents and see, you know, what the project entails and so forth. So as we learn more about it, I'm sure it will keep you posted, and oftentimes residents know more than we do. I guess this came to light because of the people who are going to install this actually visited some of the residents in that area, not our residents, but the Macedonia residents. So we don't know exactly what's going to happen, but we're also not blind to it, and we will be talking to, as I said, the mayor said she's going to talk to the mayor of Macedonia and see what can be worked out with that project. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDermott?
Yes, the Architectural Review Board met May 2nd. First item on the agenda was 9235 Helen Lane and Ryan Home, and it was previously presented on 4/18 to the Architectural Review Board, which approved it as noted. The board amended the motion of 4/18 with some window changes as noted, and it was approved. The next item was 9783 Ravenna Road, a sign, it was approved as submitted. Last item was new vestibule for Wilcox Elementary School with the security, was approved as submitted. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to department head reports. Karen House?
Good evening, everyone. You don't have a lot to report tonight, other than the fact that our state audit will be reconvening in a couple of weeks as the gap conversion is just about pretty much completed. We will be presenting at the next council meeting a resolution to adopt the new tax, the new rates for the police and fire pension, as I mentioned at the previous council meeting, that will be coming before you at the next council meeting as well. And also, we did receive our first advance for this month, and normally I'll report that, but we're up by at least 10% thus far as far as the income tax report, and I'll give that, the absolute report at the next council meeting. The finance department will be attending a training session on Thursday and Friday of this week, just as we did a couple weeks ago, for the new visual intelligence portfolio software package for the finance department. So we will be out of the office on Thursday and Friday, however, if anyone needs to contact me, of course, I will be retrieving all messages on my cellphone. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Chief Noga?
Good evening. During the month of April, the city of Twinsburg Communication Center generated 2,384 calls for service among the Twinsburg Police and Fire Departments and the Reminderville Police and Fire Departments. The total call count for the year is 10,639, which is a 9% decrease in calls over the same time period in 2012. Twinsburg police officers arrested and are cited 131 suspects into court on 173 different counts. The arrest counts include two assault charges, one domestic violence charge, 12 drug-related charges, 23 for driving under suspension without a valid license, six for DUI, five other alcohol-related charges, two disorderly conduct charges, two obstructing official business charges, and two child-endangering charges. The remaining charges were either warrants or various traffic-related charges. Twinsburg officers issued 224 written warnings on traffic stops and 22 parking citations. Officers investigated 29 traffic crashes, of which four were injury crashes, eight were on private property, and none were fatal. And I'd also like to take this opportunity to remind everyone that we are in the beginning of National Police Week. Tomorrow, May 15th, is National Peace Officer Memorial Day. That is the day set aside by President John Kennedy to memorialize and remember all those police officers, deputy sheriffs, who have been killed in the line of duty. You know, it's a specially pointed day for us. We'll remember Officer Josh McTerrian, who was killed in the line of duty here back in July 13th, 2008. We would ask that everyone join the city and other governmental agencies in lowering your flag to half-staff tomorrow, which is allowed under presidential executive order. So again, we've got two officers that are currently in Washington DC representing us for the ceremonies there, and I will be headed downtown on Friday for the Greater Cleveland Peace Officer Memorial Society Parade and Memorial Service to represent the city as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Chief Frisian?
Evening, council.
Evening.
For the month of April, we responded to 172 calls for service. 142 were in the city, 22 were in the township, and eight were mutually to other communities. During the same time period this month, we had no mutual aid requests for ourselves. After four months, the 2013 year total is 766, which is 4.5% higher than last year with 33 more runs. Our EMS billing collection through the end of April is 137,561 dollars and 85 cents that went to the general fund. Fire Prevention Bureau inspected 104 businesses between the city and the township, and the fire department personnel are still flushing hydrants. We're pretty much done with most of everything north of 82, and we've started down in the south end. We're still a little bit in Glenwood Preserve and Bell Meadow area. They'll probably be done by Friday. So we're on track to be done by middle of June, I think, at this point. And that's my report.
Thank you. Public Works, Chris Campbell?
Good evening, council. The Service Department continues to patch potholes. We've done a total of 2,239 this year. We will be moving into a little bit larger road repairs, where we do a little bit of grinding and filling of larger areas. One of the areas that we've looked at is Route 91. We're going to be getting with engineering to establish exactly what areas on 91 we'll be doing, but we should be starting that within the next month. Litter, we have made a, our first pass through the city picking up litter. Lately, we've been hitting certain areas that are heavy with litter. Probably in later, later May or June, we'll go ahead and run another, it's a, it's a specific route that we follow. We'll probably do that again, like I say, in late May or June. Branch chipping, second round of branch chipping has been completed. This round took us six days to complete, had 570 stops, and we removed a total of 221.8 cubic yards of material. The next scheduled round is for Monday, May 3rd.
June.
3rd. Is it really the 2nd?
June.
Oh, I'm sorry, June. June 3rd. Street sign replacement, we continue to move through the city, changing out all the road signs to bring those into compliance with federal regs. We recently completed Grayling Estates, and we're moving into the Summit Hills area. Roadway crack sealing, we recently completed crack sealing on Ravenna Road, Oak Brook, Lockwood Oval, Maryvale, and Fairfield, and our next scheduled roads include Shepherd, Maple Grove, Parker Lane, and Tinkers Lane. That program will, it's starting to get a little bit warmer out there, at least the forecast is for that, so we'll go as far as we can in the spring. Once it gets too hot, then we'll shut down, and we'll be, we'll be back in the fall to complete that. The wastewater department's microturbine unit continues to run very well. We've had no issues in the last month. Going into the project, we estimated between a $48,000 and a $50,000 savings per year because of the electrical generation on that unit. We're now estimating closer to $56,000. The unit is really, it's running well, and it also saves us on some other gas, natural gas consumption. So that, that's been a very good project. And finally, Waste Management. I talked to Waste Management tonight, and they have completed the delivery of all the containers. They are now back. The delivery company is now a pickup company. The delivery company is now a pickup company, and anybody that did not want to use the containers, they've called either us or the waste management number, and they're scheduled for pickup of those containers. Early on, the, the call center that, that we were using at waste management, they had some bad information. They were giving out some bad information, and so we had, we had a little rough start to the, to the program. We've gotten that straightened out. And if any residents want to either change the refuse container to a smaller container, that is a possibility. If they don't want to use the containers at all, if they just want to use the recycle container, whatever they choose to do in this program, they, they can do that. All they have to do is, that literature is contained with the containers, they just have to call waste management, and I think they'll get good treatment now with some good information. They can, if they choose to go back to just the way they used to do their garbage and recycling, they can do that. They can use the small containers. The containers were, were, it was an add-on. It was an enhancement to the, to the program. It wasn't meant to replace everything. If people, I know in condos and smaller units can't, they can't accommodate those containers. And, you know, we realized that going in, and that was, that was not an issue for us. It's not an issue for waste management. I think the problem was with this call center giving out bad information. People felt that we had made changes to this program, that they would have to comply with, and that's, that's really not the case. So whatever the residents want to do, we're more than happy to have them do that. So, but they can, we prefer they call waste management with the, with the number that we provided, but if they have to call Public Works, we can certainly accommodate that.
Chris?
Well, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Bob.
The number that was on the brochure?
Yes.
Was called, and they wanted the smaller, the 64-gallon capacity, smaller garbage pail.
Yes.
They said it wasn't available.
Right. Yeah.
Is that true?
No. The, the smaller container is, it's the exact same size as the recycle container.
Yes.
It is available, but the, the call center had, had their.
So who do they call?
They can, they can call the waste management number.
Call Fender again? And they'll know what to do?
They will know what to do. But, I mean, if you, if something happens and they don't get the response that they want, they can always call Public Works, and we'll take care of it.
Oh, I have your number.
Yeah, you do.
Okay.
Chris, I just wanted to mention one thing. A question that had come up a couple of times was, for those that are gonna use the carts, if all their trash doesn't fit in the cart, they can still put trash out around, bags around the cart, and that will be collected as well. So I think I'm seeing people, there was some argument going on, I think it was on Facebook or something last night about that, about whether or not that's all the capacity you get every week, it's just, you know, what, what the container will fit, and that's not true. If you have additional garbage, you can put it out, and it will be collected, right?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, we, we really didn't change the service. I mean, we didn't want to reduce the service or anything like that. This was, this was meant to enhance the program. And on the other end of that, if somebody feels they need a second refuse container, they can certainly get that. We've got a couple requests for those, and waste management will accommodate that as well. But it's, you know, it's 96 gallons. It's a lot of capacity, but I've had calls where people say, "No, I've got a lot of garbage." So, and, and, you know, and the other thing is, when you look at the recycle container, it's a pretty large container. If people go to the, if they, if they move the refuse over to the recycle site, we're actually gonna save money on this program, because we don't pay a dumping fee for recyclables. So this is, you know, this is meant to encourage people to increase the volume of what they recycle, so. But in theory, what should happen is, the, the recycle container, the small recycle container, should become your refuse container, and the larger one should be your recyclable, so. But, but at any rate, nothing in the service has changed. You can still put out what you, what you did before, and if you want to go back to the, to the old, your old containers, your own garbage cans, you can do that. You can use our recycle container, you can use the refuse container, whatever a resident wants to do, they're more than, more than happy to do that for them, so.
They'll take your old container if you want them, your personal one, if you want them to?
They will, yeah. They've been doing that. And the, the small recycle container, the little 18-gallon, they will take that away for you, too.
If, I just had one resident who, they actually put their can out, their own personal can, it was to be brought back to them?
Uh-huh.
But they took it and they kept it? So should they just call waste management?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
I don't know, they didn't put a note, but they took it and they, and they got rid of it, and they were looking for it, and I said, "I think just call waste management." I'm sure they'll, they'll help you out.
They'll pick up the old containers.
Yeah, you have to put a note if you want them.
So you have to make sure that that old container is one you're disposing of and not.
Yes. Yeah.
I had, I had a couple of questions asking what to do with the old recycle container.
Yep, same.
I stuck mine actually in the new recycle container, and.
I saw a lot of people do that. And they'll, they'll, yeah.
They'll take it.
Yep. Yeah. And we're gonna keep, we're gonna, we're gonna get a few of the, the smaller containers, too, in case somebody had the, they want the original and it somehow got taken away. We'll, you know, we'll get everything back to where people want it, so.
Right? Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's it for department head report. We'll move to legislation. Ordinance 16, 2013.
An ordinance creating the Twinsburg Community Improvement Corporation and authorizing the mayor to file appropriate articles of incorporation with the state of Ohio.
Okay, this is now its third reading, so I need a motion to adopt ordinance 16, 2013. I'll move. Mr. Scafidi made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Yates, seconds. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Ceraci.
As I mentioned at the last council meeting, I haven't really been sold on this idea of the CIC. I've got, I've, I've read a lot of information on it, and I've talked to people from different communities, and one thing keeps coming up. I'm told that it streamlines the process and makes it easier and faster for development. And to me, that's just not a good reason for me to support this. And I understand and respect my colleagues' opinions on this thing, but I just don't see this being the way to go. I think that I, as a council representative, have the responsibility of, of making the decisions that will be running through this CIC, so I will be voting against that this evening. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
No.
Mr. McDermott?
No. Motion passes four to two. Four to two. Okay. Ordinance 55, 2013.
An ordinance amending sections of Chapter 1144.04 and 1144.08 of the Twinsburg Zoning and Development Regulations.
Okay, this is now on its second reading. Ordinance 56, 2013.
An ordinance rezoning certain property at 8701 Darrow Road, Twinsburg, Ohio, owned by the Cleveland Clinic, from I-3 industrial use to C-3 commercial use.
This also is now on its second reading. Ordinance 57, 2013.
An ordinance rezoning certain property at 2500 East Enterprise Parkway, Twinsburg, Ohio, owned by Harris Properties LTD, from R-2 residential use to I-2 industrial use.
That is also on its second reading. Ordinance 58, 2013.
An ordinance rezoning certain property at 8265 Darrow Road, Twinsburg, Ohio, owned by Westside Falls LLC, from I-2 industrial use to R-7 senior residential use.
This is also on, that was its second reading. Ordinance 59, 2013.
An ordinance rezoning certain property at 8265 Darrow Road, Twinsburg, Ohio, owned by Westside Falls LLC, from R-2 residential use to R-7 senior residential use.
And that one is also on its second reading. Ordinance 63, 2013.
An ordinance authorizing the sale at auction of certain personal property owned by the city of Twinsburg and no longer needed for municipal purposes and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 63, 2013, place it on its third and final reading, and declare an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stoffer, seconds. Any discussion? Just when I say this is on June 25th at 2013 this year, and it's in the evening this time, something a little different they're trying, so if you're interested, come out, and there's all kinds of, is there a list that's gonna be up?
The list is attached to the legislation. I'm sure we can post it on the website, possibly.
Yeah, I think we should do that.
Yeah.
Great. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Emergency passes 6-0. Now I need a motion to adopt ordinance 63, 2013 as an emergency. So moved. Mr. Ceraci made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McDermott, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Next is ordinance 64, 2013.
An ordinance authorizing the sale at auction of certain personal property once owned by KSU and in possession of the city of Twinsburg and no longer needed for municipal purposes and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 64, 2013, place it on its third and final reading and declare an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stoffer, seconds. Any discussion?
This is the property from Kent State that's being auctioned.
Correct. The other property that was left in the building was left, and anything that is sold, the city will get the money from that. All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Emergency passes 6-0. Now I need a motion to adopt ordinance 64, 2013 as an emergency.
I'll make the motion.
Mrs. Stoffer made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And Mr. Scafidi, I do this all the time, Mr. Ceraci, second. Please call the, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes. Ordinance passes as an emergency, 6-0. Ordinance 65, 2013.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the General Revenue Fund Service Maintenance Equipment Facility, as established in ordinance 148, 2012, the appropriations ordinance of the city of Twinsburg for the year 2013 and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 65, 2013, place it on its third and final reading and declare an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Yates made the seconded. Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, this just, you know, is $13,500 additional money, and this is for a fire vehicle that needed repairs. Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Emergency clause passes 6-0. Now I need a motion to adopt ordinance 65, 2013 as an emergency. So moved. Mr. Scafidi made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll.
Second.
I'll yield.
Mrs. Stoffer, second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Ordinance passes 6-0. Ordinance 66, 2013.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of one plow truck and snow-removal equipment for use by the service department and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 66, 2013, place it on its third and final reading and declare an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ceraci made the seconded. Discussion?
This is for a five-ton plow. The money's in the capital.
The reason for the emergency is so that he can purchase it, and it could be, possibly be, be ready for this, this one, or the 13, 2014 winner.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Emergency passes 6-0. Now I need a motion to adopt ordinance 66, 2013 as an emergency. Is, sorry. Ready to go with a second?
So moved.
Mr. Yates, now I need a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stoffer, seconds. Any more discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Ordinance passes 6-0 as an emergency. Ordinance 67, 2013.
An ordinance authorizing the lease of two vehicles through Ganley Ford Incorporated for use by the police department and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 67, 2013, place it on its third and final reading and declare an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Yates, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Emergency passes 6-0. Now I need a motion to adopt ordinance 67, 2013 as an emergency.
So moved.
Mr. McDermott made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stoffer, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Seraisi?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Ordinance passes 6-0 as an emergency. Ordinance 68, 2013.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for administration for mayor operating supply, as established in ordinance 148, 2012, the appropriations ordinance of the city of Twinsburg for the year 2013 and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 68, 2013, place it on its third and final reading and declare an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Seraisi, seconds. Discussion? This is actually for a copier that's here, for in the office here at City Hall, and it's not been replaced since 2006, so greatly needed. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Seraisi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Okay, the emergency passes 6-0. Now I need a motion to adopt ordinance 68, 2013.
So moved.
Mr. Seraisi made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll yield.
Mr. Yates, second. Any more discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Seraisi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
All right, ordinance passes 6-0 as an emergency. Resolution 69, 2013.
A resolution confirming and accepting the recommendations of the Planning Commission for the building addition to Wilcox Elementary School at 9198 Darrow Road.
Need a motion to adopt resolution 69, 2013?
So moved.
Mr. Seraisi made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stoffer, second. Any discussion?
This is for building a new safe entrance to the Wilcox Primary School.
This was also approved by the ARB Architectural Review Board.
I discussed it during my planning commission.
Right.
Excellent. It's actually happening at all the schools, but this particular location needed an additional construction that had to go through planning in ARB.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Seraisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.